Salute to the flag, Councilor Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Vido.
President.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Tijada. Counselor Abadanaeta. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Pearl Atunda. Counselor Garcia. Counselor Recubro. You have six members present. You have a com, Adam Chairman. The meeting has been called for. Please be advised that Damali Vido, President of Chelsea City Council, has called for a special meeting for Monday, February 5th, 6:00 PM. The City Council changes for the following purpose. Salute to the flag, both call of members. School Department presentation.
Okay.
Motion to accept the call of the meeting.
Motion to accept the call of the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Robinson, thank you.
On to suspension.
Before I pass the floor on to Ms. Superintendent Bork, I just want to acknowledge that Counselor Judith Garcia and Counselor Anya Lopez called in there running late, and I just wanted to let everybody know that, and the floor is yours.
Madam President, first of all, thank you very much for, you know, inviting us to present here this evening. We are extremely proud of the Chelsea Public Schools and all that we do and all that we stand for. We have achieved a great reputation in the state of Massachusetts, and tonight I'd like to share a little bit of who we are, what we're doing, and where we're going with you. So, first, you know that our five-year plan is titled "A Commitment to Our Students," and it's about expanding opportunities. We started this plan in 2016 to 2021. That will be the culmination of that five-year plan. So we have already finished one year, and we're into our second year of this plan. I'm going to cover tonight, where are we now? What we have accomplished for students in the last year? And where do we need your continuing support? So, real quickly, I'm going to read a little bit of this to you, all right? For all of us in the Chelsea Public Schools, we believe deeply in our mission to welcome and educate all students. We regard the rich diversity of our community as a wonderful asset. We work hard to create excellent schools and strong educational programs that value this diversity by building upon every student's strengths, meeting the unique needs of each learner, and drawing on families' cultural and linguistic heritage. Our goal is to ensure that all of our students graduate with the skills, confidence, and habits of mind they need to be successful in college, career, and life. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our belief in the Chelsea Public Schools. That's what we live by. We are an asset-based model. We build upon our students' multilingualism, their cultural diversity, because that is who we are and the richness that we love. So who are we? We are nine schools. We are 1,200 employees, full and part-time. Our fiscal '18 budget was $87.5 million. Ladies and gentlemen, the City Council, we are your biggest elephant in the city. We employ the most number of people in our department. There is no other department that comes close to our size: police department, fire department. The school department is the largest department, and we have the largest budget. So who else are we? It's our students. So as of October 1st, 2017, we are 6,326 students. We come from 35 countries, speaking 33 languages. 5,456 of our students are Hispanic. That's 86% of our students are Hispanic. 2,357, 37%, are new to the country. They're English-language learners. 1,120 have been in the country less than three years. I'm going to say that again. 1,120 in our country, less than three years. 1,223 are from El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras in the last four years. 5,000 of our students are economically disadvantaged. 854 are students with disabilities and 20% mobility rate annually. 500 students have enrolled so far this school year, and another 400 have disenrolled and transferred out. So we have students coming in and going out, a full one-fifth of our population annually. Chelsea Public Schools has the highest percentage of English-language learners in the state. I'll repeat that again. Take a look at the farthest bar over on the right. Follow it back, it's Chelsea. We are rich in immigrant, in diversity. We are a gateway community. So what have we accomplished this year for our students? Well, we have increased the rigor in teaching and learning each and every day. We have come at this as an army of observers who are going in, looking at teaching and learning, looking at instruction, and giving feedback to teachers. By the end of this year, we will have, within the last two years, done 2,200 observations. And you can see that this is how we're tracking improvement on the various indicators for improved instruction. What else have we accomplished? And what I'd ask you to do in your folder is to take out the five-year plan, which is on the right, and you're going to put that up against you on your table on the left. Turn it over to the second side, and we're going to go through all of these bullets real quick, in terms of what we have accomplished against the goals that we set for ourselves. So we have teams of teachers who are working with the five DP as well as our own district to refine and edit the current benchmark assessments, develop new benchmark assessments, and including science. We have, we are giving benchmark assessments three times a year from the five-district partnership. We are continuing to support the capstone and portfolio defense at Chelsea High School. Matter of fact, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has asked, just last week, for a copy of all of our materials for the capstone and portfolio work that we've been doing over the last four years, because they are thinking of replicating it for the new history and social science curriculum. And that really is a credit to Principal Priti Johari and her team. There's a tiered system of support implemented in all schools, with particular emphasis in the three middle and high school turnaround plans. We have also acceleration academies taking place for our students during February and We've expanded universal design for learning from the Berkwoods to the Sokolowski and Kelly Schools. We've also expanded the social-emotional supports into, that should be seven schools. The Mind Up curriculum is in seven schools. We will be doing schools eight and nine next year. We are one-to-one technology in grades 2 through 12. I'll repeat that. We are one-to-one technology in grades 2 through 12. College Board advancement placement, 400 tests taken, and we have an increase of 13 qualifying scores last year, above last year's scores, and a qualifying score is three, four, or five. We have an associate's degree pathway for students in early college enrollment. The class of 2017 earned 1,612 college credits, equaling 385 courses. We saved over $200,000 in tuition costs for our students and $50,000 in textbook costs for our students. We are on track to have a full associate's degree by 2021. So that means that our high school students will exit us if they choose, and if they work hard, they can leave us with an associate's degree and a college application. Matter of fact, one student last year actually graduated with 27 credits, which is virtually half of an associate's degree. An associate's degree is 60 credits. So think of that in terms of the high cost of education and how Chelsea High School is really breaking the mold. Matter of fact, the early college and dual enrollment piece that we have been working on, there was a grant from DESI that just came out, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We were told we were not eligible for it because we are too far down the road in development. We've been doing this for four years. They were only going to give the grant for startup. Again, victim of our own success. We have also accomplished an education pathway at Chelsea High School. This is dear and near to my heart. We want Chelsea teachers to look like Chelsea kids. And so, we have not only our Law and Public Policy pathway that links to Bunker Hill Community College, and our Life Sciences pathway that links to Bunker Hill Community College, we now have an education pathway, which links to Bunker Hill Community College. This is a pathway for students who are interested in education. And so, our students will be able to take their adolescent psychology, early childhood psychology classes with Bunker Hill, and then they'll do their internships in one of our schools, whether it's the ELC or our elementary schools. But they will be on track to have an associate's degree in education, which they can now transfer into a four-year degree for education. They can come back, and they can teach in Chelsea. Ladies and gentlemen, I was one of those kids. So, I went to Chelsea High School. I went on to Salem State. I came back, did my student teaching at Chelsea High. I taught at Chelsea High, eventually taught at the elementary. But I am a Chelsea kid who went from Chelsea to college and back. We want more of our kids to be doing this in education. So Chelsea teachers for Chelsea kids. We have awarded 11 biliteracy awards to Chelsea High School teachers. And so, last year at the senior, at the graduation, we awarded for students who could prove that they were biliterate in at least two languages. And biliterate means that reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And we were able to give them an award, and they can put that on their resume moving forward. Oh, by the way, just a month ago, the legislature passed the Look Act, which actually has a biliteracy award in it. We were first. Built upon the high school communities, we've built upon the community service work, and we're beginning to expand into the middle schools. Expansion of the school day in all three middle schools, I will tell you, is under revision, and we are looking at more district ownership, but it also, too, is a place where we're looking for improved services to students over time. Continuing, and it's also a budgetary concern, continuing to work with healthy Chelsea and connect after-school programming to a healthy lifestyle. That's another place that we're working. And then we're looking at expanding the dual-language program into the middle schools. We have not been successful at expanding the Camino's program yet into the middle schools. So we will be working on that in the next couple of years. What else have we done? Successful collaboration with teachers to benefit the students. We have a three-year signed contract with our Chelsea Teachers Union. We have a good working relationship and collaboration with our Chelsea Teachers Union. We've worked with Salem State University and DeCot College, and now we just signed an agreement two days, last Friday, last Thursday, with Harvard to bring in teachers as residents who will spend a year with our kids, and then if we have an opening, they can apply for a teaching position with us. We have expanded community and parent knowledge and background through the Parent Information Center, and we've published the publication that's in your left-hand side of your pocket in your envelope, the Chelsea Public Schools Overview. And this is something that looks at all of our schools and gives four parents a great summary of everything that is offered, in terms of also the differentiation, school to school. And it is offered in English and Spanish, and if people need another language, we will also look to translate it. We looked for, the assessing and evaluating the need for new space. That's one of the things we talked about last year when I presented in front of you. Do we need a new school? We have decided to wait on the idea of a new school and look for internal construction where we can find new space for our students. The other reason for that is we have flatlined in terms of our student population. So the dramatic growth that we have seen, we have flatlined over the last two years, although still, we are 13% increase on our student population over the last five years. Technology department, we've added 1,390 Chromebooks. This is how we're getting to the one-to-one technology. We've installed infrastructure at Clark Avenue School. We've installed 600 phones. I'm not going to go through the full list. 48 display boards at Clark Avenue. 440 new desktops to replace old ones throughout the district. And also, 210 new ones at the Clark Avenue School. Facilities management accomplishments. And I need to say thank you to the City Council, because this is funded in part directly from your budget. So we have district funds that fund the improvements in terms of facilities, but we also have your CIP funds that come to us. So, we have things that you can think about in terms of this. Again, I won't go through all of it in the list, but we have new boiler replacements at Chelsea High School. We have, you know, certainly new handheld radios. The Chelsea High School cafeteria renovations, if you've been in there in the last couple of months, and you've seen how we've improved that. The exterior sidewalk repairs at the Mary C. Burke Complex. Looking at the ventilation and the heating at the Mary C. Burke Complex. LED lighting at the Mary C. Burke Complex. At the John Silver Learning Center, we're talking, they replaced exterior lighting, and also another boiler replacement. Please remember, our schools are now 22 years old, excluding the Clark Avenue School. The age is catching up, so we're trying to do that ongoing maintenance to sustain our buildings. And you would never know that our buildings are that old.
How old is the high school?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three?
Yep. Yep. So, we do a very good job of taking pride in the municipal buildings that you've given us.
I'll ask the council just one question. That's just a question.
And then, of course, Clark Avenue School, Phase Two, which will not be complete until August. So, we're also very proud of all of that work. And we are on schedule, so we're not behind schedule on that one at all. State accountability system. So now we're going to talk about student achievement. So student achievement versus growth. And this is where I want to make sure that you understand there's a difference between achievement and growth. Under the state accountability system, I am sure you have heard that Chelsea Public Schools are a struggling school system. They are, in the sense that we have a complex student population that we have to meet the needs. But, when you really think about it, we are doing an unbelievable job. The problem is, our state accountability system does not show that. So, there are two things to know about the state accountability system. Achievement is the set of standards or curriculum that students need to learn. And if you learn it, you score well. If, you know, it doesn't take into consideration, if this is where we need to get students to, sometimes our students come into us from another country. They're down here, and we have to get them up here. So that's growth. Unfortunately, our state accountability system actually is a four-to-one ratio. There's four parts of achievement that counts, and one part growth to get your final determination. In the future, there is talk with the new Commissioner Jeff Riley coming on board, that he's in favor of actually a three-to-two ratio, as the superintendent in the Lawrence Public Schools, his community faces very similar things to the Chelsea schools, where growth is really a stronger indicator than just sheer achievement. And so here, if you take a look at, these are the student growths. If you take a look at most of our areas, in terms of the state medium, the SGP, Student Growth Percentile, is in black. You have urban network in the orange, and then red you have Chelsea. In grade eight, Chelsea actually outscored, in grade eight, and grade four, actually a little bit, outscored the state. But in many cases, Chelsea is meeting the urban network as well. The one place that we see a decline is grade five, but that really is because our grade four students exit to our charter schools, and there is a pull and a drain on that, on the academic achievement there. Same thing in the math. We see it's a little bit less, but you see, even in grade four, we're beating the state and the urban areas. At Chelsea High School, our student growth percentile is kind of flat right now, so that's where we have the 1.1 million turnaround grant from the state, and we're trying to work to pull the student growth percentiles up. So, we have also, keep in mind, that's 10th grade. Sometimes we receive kids in 9th grade, and that's predominantly our students coming in from other countries. So it is harder to get them to a proficient bar. We get them to the needs improvement, but at least they're not failing, and we get that achievement within one to two years. By four years, look at what's happening. You have the class of 2017, 300-strong. 70% are attending a two or a four-year college, and that includes our immigrant students. They were accepted to over 66 colleges and universities, over $2.3 million in scholarship money. Forty, I can't see that line, forty, 4% entered a certificate program. 2% entered a trade school. 3% took a gap year. 3% entered the military, and 13% are going directly into the workforce. Keep in mind, mobility rate, we talked about 20% every year. Cumulatively, our students who begin in kindergarten, only 15% of them will get to high school graduation with us because of the mobility rate. So we only actually have a stability rate from kindergarten to grade 12 of, on average, 15%. So where do we need the continued support from you? Well, the state recognizes the complexity of our student population. Our students are ELL, Children of Poverty with High Mobility, overwhelmingly. We need you to speak positively about our schools. We need positive comments. We are our own best advertisement and marketing. In Chelsea, we need you to continue to support us financially. And also, keep in mind, the state, federal, and private funding is all drying up. It's getting tighter. We got word on Friday that the Title II funds are probably going to be completely eliminated from the federal level. Title II pays for our professional development for teachers. In terms of the state advocacy, the low-income economically disadvantaged. So we're back to that count. And if you have heard anything about what's going on in Everett, Everett is in a financial deficit, and from what has been published in the newspaper, it's because of their count on the low-income and economically disadvantaged. I have worked for the last two years with a working group. We were successful, to a certain degree, with the state this year. We asked them, and I believe I sent to you, the Council President, on September 21st, a letter that we wrote to Acting Commissioner Jeff Wilson. We asked them to take, as a solution, to take our immigrant numbers, to take our homeless numbers, to take our migrant numbers, and to start to look at taking all of the mass health programs and identifying them as economically disadvantaged. They took all the mass health programs, however, they did not take our recommendations in the other areas. So, good news, we did increase by 700 students. So last year, I stood before you, and I told you where just about 2,000 students were not counted. We increased by 700. We did increase by all of them. We're going to go back this year and do more of that petitioning and advocacy. But we are up by 700 students in terms of the low income. Foundation Budget Reform Commission, we are still $2 billion as a state, underfunded in education. 1993, the foundation formula has not been revisited for inflation. Yes, the governor has increased to a historic level the amount of money that has been given to K-12 education in Chapter 70. However, when it's adjusted for inflation, we're still 6.8% lower than where we were in 2002. I gave a speech at Stonehill College on Friday. In your packet, I think it might be the last item, is a speech on the Foundation Budget Reform Commission that I gave. There is discussion in terms of getting advocacy around a new lawsuit. The lawsuit from Hancock in 1993 actually spurred 1993 education reform, because of the fact that education was not being funded adequately for the needs of our students. The urban superintendents, as well as others, have stated that this is a place where the inadequacy can lead to a possible lawsuit. I also ask for your support in Senate Bill 223, an act modernizing the foundation budget for the 21st century. This is Sonia Chang Diaz's bill that she has put forward. I ask for your advocacy now, send an email tonight even. You know, it's coming out of committee, we believe, and it's going to be moving forward. Senate Bill 223, as I explained in my speech, is actually the first place to start in terms of addressing the recommendations made by the Foundation Budget Reform Commission. And then again, the federal level, we have, last year, we lost $200,000 in Title II and $100,000 in Title I. It's continuing to dry up. Title IV is continuing to dry up, and so we need advocacy even at the federal level. We need to be making sure that we're getting hold of all of our federal representatives and for our advocacy, and our senators, Senator Warren, Markey, et cetera. All right. So the reality is the following, that in a full year's worth of time, when you count up all the minutes and the hours in 365 days, schools only have students for 20% of the time. We can't do it alone. 20% of the time cannot fill everything that is being put on our plates. We need community advocacy. We need to be in this together. And so, the next chapter of education reform in our state requires a broader conception than just simply a one-size-fits-all accountability system. More than simply layering on more and more in schools for the same 20% of time and for minimal monetary investment from the state and federal levels is impossible. We have, what will be quickly coming down the pike for us to implement, is a computer education K-12. We also have a history, social science, and civic curriculum, K-12. And yet, there's no extra money being given to us to be able to do this. So, with this, the social-emotional level, the community piece, we need help, and we need the help of the community. 20% of the time in a child's life is not enough to close the gap, to do annual growth and catch-up growth, and all of the social-emotional, character education, everything is being put on the schools. The reality, we are in a new era of federalism, of localism. The economic prosperity of our communities depends on our schools succeeding and providing the next-best education. But we need to be more than an MCAS score. Where we continue to go as a successful public school system is our civic responsibility as a community. It is your responsibility, along with the school committee, and I thank the school committee members that are here tonight, Jeanette Velez, Mr. DePato, and Mr. Moronsky, as well as I thank my team for being here tonight, Assistant Superintendent Linda Bro, Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent, and Business Manager Michael Mason. And Jerry McHugh apologizes, but he had tickets to the Beanpot, and I didn't have the heart to tell him not to go. I will stop talking and answer questions.
Congress, have any questions?
Counselor Brown.
Can you just explain a little bit, you probably have members of the public that's watching this hearing, what do you mean by the one-on-one technology?
So we have the capability, if we wanted to, in all of those grades, to have everybody have a piece of, whether it's a Chromebook, a laptop, in front of them, all at the same time.
So that's throughout the whole school district?
Yep.
Okay. And how long has that been in play?
This year, well, we've been building over the years. We have a wonderful, you know, IT Director Miguel Andrea Toler, and he's been building and investing every single year, and then we've gotten a couple of grants. You know, one of the things we're struggling with is, God forbid, they all want to be online at the same time. The bandwidth is occasionally an issue, but we're working on that next.
Is that a fully-funded grant program for the computers?
Right now, they are all ours, yes.
They are all?
Yep. So some of the, it's patchwork, right? So some of it's district funds, some of it's grant funds. So it's always, you know, looking at the vision and backwards mapping in terms of how are we going to pay for it, and sometimes you take from different buckets.
But you have received grants for some of the computers?
Yes.
Okay. Most of them?
I would say 50/50.
Also, what's the average number of students, if you have this, that's left the Chelsea Public School system over the last four years and enrolled into a charter school? Do you have an average per year?
So, I can give you, actually, the most frequent, the one that I've just been dealing with in terms of money enrollment was the Excel Charter School, so I can speak to Excel. Excel, right now, has 554 students from Chelsea. But they start at grade five, and so roughly, it'll be like 100, maybe 115 per year. But they're also adding a grade level every year, so every year for the next couple of years, it will still go up.
Just one more brief question. So, with the low-income economic disadvantaged program, what are you what are you doing to make people aware of that and how important that is to us? Because with every child that's not counted, I believe, the bill states that we lose, we lose funding. So what's your awareness to the parents and the students?
So I have, um, spoken, um, throughout the district. I've talked to, um, certainly, I keep the school committee informed. Um, I've written multiple, um, papers, white papers, advocacy with the legislators, and, um, a couple of interviews, um, every so often with Seth Daniels. Matter of fact, there should be one shortly. I just sent him some stuff this morning, so.
So, I mean, if it's not really looked into, how much you expect to lose? I mean, not a, I mean, a ballpark number?
In terms of?
Students not being counted or because of the in- information if family members are now scared to give up?
I'm thinking that right now, we're probably still missing, it's possible, close to a thousand.
How much?
Possibly, close to a thousand.
Of the students?
Yep. But, here's, here's one of the other injustices that has taken place, though. This year in particular. So they have expanded the enrollment, um, on the mass health, which identified across the state, twenty-eight thousand additional low-income students. For Chelsea, it was an additional seven hundred and one students. All right? But, in order to, how do I wanna put this? The pie didn't get bigger, the slices got smaller. So, they expanded and identified more students, but they cut the allocation. They cut the allocation of each student per pupil by three hundred dollars.
So are you saying it's best to use the mass health statistic, denial statistics?
Um, no. What I'm saying is that the, in order for them to balance their budget, they didn't put more money towards low income. They just cut the allocation by three hundred per student.
Okay, I'd like to talk to you later about it, but I know we've got a lot of questions.
Councilor Cooperow.
In this little paper here, you says eighty-seven percent low income under the old method of calculation. Do you have the new method of calculation?
Yes, sixty-six, I think it's right there, sixty-six point six?
Here, you says old method, eighty-seven percent.
Oh, oh, you're reading the speech. So it's in the slide, it's, it's sixty-six point six. Hold on one second, we'll get there. Right there. So sixty-six point three. That's where we're missing the students, right? In terms of the gap?
That says?
Look at the space in the first line, after the space.
Right next to five thousand, Mr. Cooperow.
Yeah, it says eighty-six percent low income. Well, how do you know when they're low income? What is the method the state is using and what you're using?
Do you remember, the old method? Do you remember when your, your children were in the Chelsea Public Schools? You had to fill out the, the lunch forms every year and send it back in? That's, that's the old method.
But what is the new method?
The new method is they use the Executive Office of Health and Human Services database. And so, um, a student has to be enrolled in one of the social services programs in order to be identified as low income. What we have argued with the state is that, that, um, you know, not all families are enrolled in the health, in the, um, in the database, whether it's mass, mass health or other places, because, um, a lot of times, they're afraid to enroll. And so we do think that there is a direct link to our immigrant population and the fear factor. Matter of fact, on February fourteenth of, um, two thousand and seventeen, there was a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education report that actually said that they do believe that there is, it seems that there is a systemic bias um, against immigrant families that could possibly, um, you know, the new method has a systemic bias against immigrant families and not being counted. Now, since then, that, that has been discounted by a few people, but it's still in writing in a report, and that's where a lot of, um, possibly a lawsuit, um, can, can be developed.
Here you have the statistics with state and all these numbers you got here. Where do we rank with the state? Here, I don't see where we rank. We see in certain things you have us with the state and others, you don't have us with the state.
So if you're talking about the, the accountability system, um, the Early Learning Center, the John Silver Early Learning Center does not have an accountability. They're not ranked at all. So they're too little, so they don't rank them.
So what do we rank with the state?
So then, I'm gonna go through all the schools and let you know, all right? So, on a, on a one-to-five ranking, all right? You have the Hook School, who is level one. You have the Kelly School, level two. You have the Berkowitz School and the, um, Sokolowski? Well, level three. The three middle schools are level three, and the high school is level three.
Yeah, but what do we rank with the state? Where are we? Let's say, there's a hundred cities in the s- going to school, right? Where were we? At the top or the bottom or the middle? Where are we?
In terms of compa- oh, I see what you're saying.
In terms of?
Yeah.
How our children are performing statewide? In our system, how was it ranked towards the other systems?
So we don't do those comparisons, and the state doesn't do those comparisons. The Boston Globe might, but we do not do those comparisons in terms of, of ranking with each other. Or Commonwealth Magazine might do it. So I don't have that.
But over here, you show our students with the state. You got how they perform in state levels. You have it here in your thing, how we go with state levels, right? But yet, I don't see anything that lists our school rated against what is our actual state level with other schools. Here, you, you have a thing that says we perform math, science, and it has the state, and it has the district, and it has us. How we perform against them.
So the only thing that the state does is they level you, level one to five. And I've given you the levels that we're at. So they don't, they don't do, they don't do comparisons to individual districts. They will level you in terms of the accountability system. It won't be in the speech.
But it's still, okay, my question is, where do we rank? If they were to rank us with the states, where do we go? Where are we?
We would, we would be?
Are we at the top or the bottom?
We would be with the other urban districts. We would probably be in the lower one-third.
Lowest?
No, I said lower one-third.
Lower one-third, okay, that's down on the bottom.
But wait a minute, wait a minute. Before you, let's, let's go back to talk positively, right? We are dealing and educating a very complex, wonderful population, and we're taking them.
A lot of cities have your same population. You go to East Boston, it has the same population. Revere has the same population. Everett has the same population. So I hear that all the time, but that doesn't work. We all have the same population.
Actually, no. No.
No?
So go down and take a look at Revere, right? Compared to Chelsea. Take a look at Everett compared to Chelsea.
They have no Hispanic population either?
That's not Hispanic, that's English-language learners immigrant.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you say, what makes us different than the other district, than the other s- systems? Our population, right?
We're, we're forty percent, I believe that, but take a look. The longer we have our kids, we're getting them to college. The benchmark at tenth grade, after they've only been in the country one or two years, is not a good.
But you're talking, they've been in the country. That's not the issue. Been in the country, not been in the country, that's not the issue. You can't com- you're talking education for all. Everybody's equal here.
Absolutely.
You can't say who's been in the country or wasn't been in the country. When you go, I came from a different country. So that, that argument doesn't go with me, 'cause I came from a different country. I learned. I wasn't put in a thing and say, you're different than the rest because you came from somewhere else.
I am not saying that, uh, our, our students are different. I'm saying that our students need more support in order to meet the grade-level standards. And I'm okay with that. Because when we do support them, we prove, we get them into college with scholarship money.
Oh, let me ask you a question then.
Last question, Mr. uh, Mr. Vicupo, there are other people here.
Okay, I, I wanna ask one more question. We're gonna do your budget this year, right? Are you asking for more money? Or, or you're gonna have the same budget that the state allows you to have? What are you asking for?
The city manager can attest to the fact that I will always ask for more money. I am here to fight for my kids, our kids. So yes, I will always ask.
But the people we represent also are fighting for their own existence.
And I res- I respect that. Okay. Councilwoman Robinson.
What is the gap that we need to reach in order to balance your budget? And what, what plan do you have to address those concerns?
So it's too early to talk about that, um, because we have an obligation first and foremost, um, to meet with the city manager and go over our numbers, which I think is Thursday. Um, and then, my obligation is to present my budget to the school committee. Um, and then we come to the community and to you. And then, actually, you'll have the plan when that, yeah, so.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned in your presentation that Chelsea's a gateway community. And I know that we have been for a while, but it's hard to believe that people are coming here from other countries and can actually afford to live here. Are we still considered a gateway community?
Absolutely. Our, our, our families are doubling and tripling and quadrupling, so it's still happening. Even though, I, you're talking about the gentrification?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is, is definitely happening in some places. Um, but, I mean, I, I just received, in the month of January, fourteen students from, um, El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. So I don't know the breakdown of how, out of the fourteen, which countries, but from Central America, fourteen came in. So we're still getting a good monthly influx.
Okay, I just wanna say that my daughter is a Camino's program alum. Wonderful program, I would love to see that be expanded. Um, you also said that last year, we had this growth of incoming youth, and we've since flatlined. Since we are gentrifying, it seems like we're catering more to couples, single people, um, and not so much families. This is a two-part question, so ignore that for a second. But what percentage of your budget goes to school administration?
Very little. I can't, I don't have it off the top of my head, but when you receive my, uh, our presentation from the budget, we always put it in a pie chart so that you can see how very little we actually dedicate to administration in our district.
Okay. So, all right, so then, that's not specific, so I can't ask that question.
Our biggest portion of our budget goes to classroom instruction and all that that encompasses.
Okay, so what I'm trying to find out is what happens when we're not flatlining and now we have less kids coming into the schools? How will the schools sustain themselves financially?
Well, we're always really very good at trimming and, and making sure that, you know, we're, um, first of all, we're, we're very good at looking what is effective and what is not effective. Um, we look at a lot of data and, um, you know, my staff, as well as the school committee can tell you, I probably inundate them with it, with data, right? So, um, you know, we have no qualms in terms of cutting programs that are not effective. But, well, you know, at the same time, um, we wanna make sure our kids are serviced, right? So we try to do things, um, in a different way. One of the things is, we're, with our middle schools, we're gonna look for an in-house model, um, for our after-school and expanding our school day, because we feel we can do it better and cheaper. Um, so, um, that will be more, when, that, that plan will be coming out at the, um, at the time of budget. And then, yeah, I mean, we look at student enrollment, and when, in theory, when your enrollment goes down, you need fewer staff, so you start to cut the staffing positions. We like to, um, to do that through attrition and retirements more than, you know, letting somebody go. Um, so, we're very good at that, at, you know, at being able to do that.
Okay, I have three more, and I'll try to be fast. So you, when you went through the class of twenty seventeen and you broke down the percentages, I added it up and it went to ninety-five. What happened to the other five percent of the students?
Um, those were probably, um, kids who hadn't, at that point, I think that, um, we had about five percent probably that didn't have, like, a, a next step in their mind. So, yeah, they didn't have any plans.
Okay, um, and then I have one. As you talk about growth in the schools, I'd like to know what your thoughts are about special education and growing, seeing that there's a growing rates of students on the spectrum.
Um, well, we have, actually, we have one of the, um, the more successful, we call it the Social Communications Program. It is our, um, you know, kindergarten, pre-K through grade twelve, um, for students on the autism spectrum. And so we have the program, we've been like adding a year every year. And so we have it, um, now, I think next year will be our first group of students on the, on the spectrum, as you say, um, who will be entering the ninth grade. And so it's extremely successful. Matter of fact, Everett Public Schools does not have, um, nor does Excel Academy, and they both tuition into us, students from Everett Public Schools and, um, Excel, because they don't have, um, you know, the, the program, and we do, and it's an, it's an excellent program.
Okay. And then the last thing is, um, I know you said that what you need is positive reinforcement from us. And, as you know, I reach out to you whenever I have a concern. You know, we're hearing so much from different parents. There are many concerns out there, and I have no problem being positive. I meditate often, I practice mindfulness, I try to be positive on a regular. However, we're often not given this information about what's happening in our schools, and we're hearing it from constituents, so it's, it's, it's a concern of mine as a, a, a parent who, of a child that goes to a charter school, and I want to be able to have the faith in my school system, I do. I don't. And so, that is not a, a slight against you. I know you do your best, and I know that the school committee works hard. I know there are teachers there that are great, and, and, and I understand what you're dealing with. It's, it's, there's a lot coming in, and it's a, it's hard. But I'll be positive, if you could feed me more information and convince me that, I have no problem with that. I think we'll only work, we'll do better if we work together better. Um, but I, I need, I need more, and I just wanted to say that.
Sure. I mean, um, certainly, I used to meet when, um, Mr. Robinson was president. If you wanna meet, um, I can certainly, you know, as much as with regular, my schedule usually imploded on poor Leo, but, um, you know, I would, I would welcome that. And that's one of the reasons why I started this last year. I came to, before you last year to present, and then this year, because I felt like we weren't getting the, the, the knowledge to the, um, to the city council.
Yeah.
I will also say that in this time and place, in our country, and in, um, in our community, in our state, we have a lot of kids with social-emotional issues. Lot of students that are struggling. But again, I go back to, you know, we're only twenty percent of the time. And so we do need the community to help with this.
Absolutely.
And to help stabilize, you know, um, you know, the, the educational experience, but mostly the, the societal experience for our students.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Councilor De Hada?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. Thanks to the, uh, school committee and the, your staff for being here and, and presenting this. As you know, I'm a huge fan. Uh, mainly because, uh, well, you guys really direct the future of our city, right? And having arrived here when I was eleven at Shetland School, um, you know, I, I really appreciate all the effort that the city's always putting forward to try and, you have a really complicated issue, 'cause you have a lot of people from third-world countries, where I came from was a third-world country, uh, that have a lot of external forces that, that influence them. Uh, not to mention the new issues, which are, of course, the social media issues. So you have a lot, a lot to deal with. Uh, and I, I applaud you and, and the city for always doing what they can with the budget that they have and what they have, the resources available, to, um, cater to, uh, our kids in need. And I think that's a fantastic thing. My, my topic i- is more along the lines of this Associate Degree Pathway Program, which I think it's fantastic. And, and I, I think it's fantastic, because very often, I find that while there is assistance and help for people, for kids and families that are disadvantaged, uh, and growing up, there are kids that have a little bit of a special, they're a little extra smart, you know? And, and very often, they find themselves getting caught in a place and in a situation where their advancement may be, uh, stalled a little bit, because the resources aren't available, the programs aren't available. Uh, so I applaud you on this, this Associate Degree Pathway Program. I think that, that's something that, uh, I look forward to seeing flourish in the future. I, I'm curious, are there any other, uh, schools that are, uh, in the district, in the area? If you know, that may be planning on putting something like that together?
Um, so this is our fourth year.
And, I'm sorry?
But I, this is our fourth year. Um, and so, um, I do know that the governor is, is definitely, he has looked at it, he has seen it. Um, there are, um, Malden High School has a dual enrollment, but it's not a pathway. It's not a holistic wraparound like we have. So there are little places where they're doing it. We have over two hundred kids enrolled in this right now.
So you do?
Over two hundred from Chelsea High School.
And that's phenomenal, because, you know what? It is, it, being in the field that I'm in, I'm always thinking that there's first-time homebuyers that have a lot of help. Low-income first-time homebuyers. But then there's those people and those kids and young people in their twenties who, for all intents and purposes, did what they were supposed to do.
Right.
And, because they're a little bit above the- And because they're a little bit above, they, there's no help for them. Even though the economics of the time, everybody needs help, you know? Nothing's cheap anymore.
No. And it does. College education is expensive. And so, I think, you know, Julio Hernandez won't mind if I say that he was also, so he's on our, our school committee. And he took a couple of classes at Bunker Hill. So, he's already started well into his associate's degree by the time he left us. So, and, and he's kind of jealous that we will be with the full degree in a couple of years.
It's such, well, and, and that's the thing. You know what? It's such a great way to mitigate some of the, some of the expense of getting additional education in college. You know, so I applaud you on that.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a great thing.
Any other questions, councilors?
No? Well, thank you so much for presenting today.
We'll be reaching out and scheduling with you.
All right. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.